I'm gonna ask Giovanni Arnold and Owen Hubbard if they'll come up, up to the front for us. These two young men are gonna be sworn in tonight for Mayor's Youth Council. Uh, but before we do that, I'm gonna ask them if they'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's Jason Stewart. Can you lead us in prayer, please?
Gentlemen, if you don't move your hats. Dear heavenly Father, we come before you at this time, Lord. We thank you for this day. God, we thank you for our city. Thank you for all those that are gathered here today, Lord. We ask that you would lead, guide, and direct this council as we do business for the city. We ask, God, that you'd keep your hand upon all of our police, our fire safety, our soldiers abroad, Lord, and we ask all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Y'all will step right up here.
Yeah.
And I'm gonna ask you to raise your right hand, and I'm gonna say, I, and then I'm gonna repeat after me. I'm gonna say, I, and then I'm gonna leave it blank. Don't you say your name, okay? And then we'll go through with that, so. Aye.
Aye. Owen.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
that I will support, uphold, and defend
I will support, uphold, and defend
Constitution of the United States of America
The Constitution of the United States of America.
and the laws thereof.
and the laws thereof.
that I will support
I will support.
uphold and defend
uphold and defend.
the Constitution and laws of the state of Arkansas.
the Constitution and laws of the state of Arkansas.
not inconsistent therewith.
not inconsistent therewith.
that I will observe and obey
that I will observe and obey.
the laws and ordinances of the city of Truman.
the laws and ordinances of the city of Truman.
that I will faithfully perform and discharge
I will faithfully perform and discharge.
the duties incumbent upon me
the duties incumbent upon me.
as a member of the Truman Mayor's Youth Council.
as a member of the Truman City Youth Council.
fairly and honestly
fairly and honestly.
and to the best of my skills and abilities.
and to the best of my skills and abilities.
Good job. Y'all will give these to Ms. Brandy. And welcome aboard.
Congratulations.
All right, at this time, I will call meeting to order by asking Ms. Totty for a roll call, please.
Cindy Wood.
Here.
Candita Robinson. Kara Roach.
Here.
Billy Poe.
Here.
Jason Stewart.
Here.
John Paul Thompson. Ernie Link.
Here.
Brandon Schrader.
Here.
Bonnie Winkles. Brett Parker.
Here.
Uh, we have a call on. Uh, you have a copy of the meeting minutes in your packet from the November meeting. I'll give you a minute to look over them by a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion. We approve the minutes of written.
Ernie Link made a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Jason Stewart's second. Any discussion? Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose with no. All right, financial reports are also in your packet. Give you a minute to look over them, and entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion. Love.
Brandon Schrader made a motion to approve.
Second.
Cindy Wood's second. Any discussion? Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose with no. Minutes to stand approved, as written. All right, Department of Courts, Chief Thomas.
I've had a whole lot, uh, since our last meeting, we hired, we moved our time animal control officer. And we started hearing this morning for three hundred.
Good deal.
Good, right?
They've achieved the best motion we've ever had since the time.
That's great.
Am I having questions, Chief Thomas?
Who is our part-time animal control officer?
I'm like, Samantha's sister.
Who?
Samantha, that's already working.
Oh, yeah.
This one's actually.
Okay.
You know, I talked to Samantha one day, and I said, I don't have to be bedded, be cared for, seven days a week because it's a week. It doesn't air. Way over there.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Later comes in and asks me if I thought we made it somewhere.
Sure do. Good job.
Yeah.
Appreciate y'all.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Chief Kemper is not here. Uh, I asked Assistant Chief Blackwood.
Uh, we got the hell of a lights completely up and operational. Um, so they're more, um, obviously, I know y'all seen the Christmas lights at the fire station. Completely don't have a break, it costs the fire department or the city anything.
Good.
We were really excited about that. We wanted to do that for years, and the tornado come through, so it was, it was good. Um, one day yesterday, we called, uh, between seventy-five and eighty, teacher re-certified and taught. Um, CPR's off completely for the school for the end of the year, for the end of the show. Um, that was pretty awesome. Um, that's all we got going on right now. If y'all have any questions, please go through. On every Wednesday.
Yeah, fire station look real good.
Thanks. We're, we're, we're happy we in there. I brought them here.
Uh, Ms. Payton.
Just business as usual. I don't have much of a report, but I'll be glad to answer any questions. Anybody got? Christmas lights are up, right? Freeze up, right?
Thank you. It was lit when I left my house.
I turned, hey, I turned the switch on to make.
Thank you.
Look nice.
Yeah, question.
And just little FYI, somebody stole the two-hundred-foot extension cord.
No doubt.
Two o'clock, after two o'clock during the daytime. But James.
Yep.
Yeah, they're on. They already think they know who it is. But James, uh, took care of it and got some more cords to get it hooked back up, so. All right, uh, Lacy, is she here? Mr. Campbell.
Yes, sir.
I know you're here. I saw you come in.
You did. I was sleeping, and it didn't work. Um, I, one, congratulations on, uh, working on the dogs. I found three straight, the last three trips, and the one tonight, when I came to see you, was coming up the wrong way of traffic. The dog won't even play traffic. Uh, I keep trying not to hold it. What else did I, but, um, what we're working on right now, and what you guys are, uh, going to resolve is a resolution that this has to be done. This is all formality for us to try to get some tornado sirens, uh, on an emergency basis. In Jamilah, in Little Rock, in Dayton, and in, uh, DC. You know, what's the way that we should get rid of this part of each other? We're finished here, so hopefully this will be productive. Any questions? Got anything? Oh, I didn't want to ask real quick, do we have a, a hometown, was it called Main Street Status, Main Street USA, Main Street Arkansas? Are we enlisted in either of those?
Not right now.
I don't, it's not gonna be big deal, but you can get some smaller answer.
We mentioned we got that.
Signed up with it.
All right, that's all of the department reports, committee reports. Uh, I'm gonna start with, uh, Jason Stewart, with our budget committee, uh, since that is actually our first, uh, well, actually it's the second one. Uh, we'll, we'll skip committee reports, uh, and bring it up when we go to the first resolution for new business. Uh, Ward Report.
Wait a minute, can I ask you something?
Yes, ma'am.
Mark, can you hear about the Christmas festival?
Ward Reports.
No, committee.
She's just flipping up.
Okay, well, yeah, you can.
I just wanted to, we had it this weekend, our Christmas festival, our annual, and I felt like it was a big success. I was happy to be a part of it, thanking the fire department for the hot dogs, and the police department for giving us popcorn, and having free giveaways, and our James Department for making sure our lights were going and still going. There's a lot of people that was involved in it. It was, I think we, I know, I think Revit told me we served over three hundred hot dogs, so everybody didn't get a hot dog, but I feel like that it was a really good event this year. And, um, maybe we can just keep growing. I'm very thankful for the new tree that we have. If you haven't seen it, please go drive by. It's beautiful. And, um, anyway, I was just glad to be a part of it and thank everyone that helped with it.
And a big part of it. I will say that. If it wasn't for you, you, you pulled it together. I'm very thankful for that.
I agree. Thank you. You did a great job, and so does everybody else.
Now, Ward Report.
Yeah, you can go.
I said one question on mine, made, made dressing in different part of the meeting, but where are we on Vance McDaniel's trailer house we condemned a year ago and nothing been done? We condemned in January of this year.
Yeah, that's, uh.
Never boarded up the windows, never boarded the doors.
Right.
I've been turned in with the notice intent to tear down at least one of the trailers. I turned in two, ADQ, they turned down one of them, said that we were, they were not willing to tear one of them down without doing asbestos testing and further testing and more expensive stuff. And as far as I'm concerned, in the future, the rest of the trailers are back there. I'm gonna go ahead and do condemnations on them, so at least we'll get them done out of the way, and sooner or later, hopefully, we need to clean them up. He's, he's talked to me several times and said, at one point, he was gonna auction everything off, another point, he was selling them, another point, he and his son had both told me they were gonna move them off. I mean, you see what's happened so far. I better go back out there and put condemnations signs back up on them, which is, and they weren't tore down. A lot of places have tear them down. But in this case, they were faded. You couldn't see them, but as far as I know, they're on the agenda at some point to be torn down when the public works. They usually take care of all that. It's unfortunate it falls on the city to have to do it.
Yeah.
Be responsible for their own properties, in my opinion, but.
Are we finding him? I know in part where.
I, I, no, I haven't written him any tickets. I've never written anyone any tickets for it, so, you know, sooner or later, probably need to start somewhere. He has been fined for other things in the past that were related, you know, thousands of dollars worth of fines for getting to comply. And it's just some folks sometimes, nothing is missing from Daniel personally, but I'll just part of it. He's difficult to work at the times and get results from. And he's not the only one. There's other folks as well.
Okay.
That's, that's where we're at right now. It's not, you know, we're not trying. If you have any suggestions, or anybody does, to make it quicker, help, I am all ears, and we'd love to.
Yeah.
I wish we could tear them all down today and be done, and have all these new houses built. A lot of people come in, private investors, some of them sitting out here now.
Yeah.
Buy old condemned properties, they tear them down and build plenty of new houses, and I love those folks.
Me too. Sounds looking better.
James, I don't know if you, have you talked to Jason or anything about those? They have a list of the houses that have been condemned and have gone through the full process to be torn down. And they start on that list tearing them down. And, of course, obviously, they can't just go in and start tearing because they, they got others to do as well. So they, they've come a long ways. They're, they're getting there, and that may, I'm sure it's on the list, but I don't know how far down it is on that list.
I will say that it's, it's just not talk. That's the number one on the list to start with that round of condemnations, because that's, we usually try to prioritize by the most complaints, the most problems and nuisances, and that's, I mean, that's number one right now. There's some others right behind it.
On that rank.
The dogs right there.
We got others that's ahead of that on the previous round of condemnations.
Okay. I just wonder.
It is being worked on. It's just a matter, it's not one of those things that's kind of her and waiting on.
Yeah.
All right, any other on wards?
Yeah, I've got a couple of things. So I wanted to highlight some of the work Nider Cook's been doing for Ward Three. She's really kind of got a lot of people involved and, uh, just kind of lighting the fire under some folks. And she's got, she went to Walmart, got like six turkeys for the food pantry. Uh, she's called meetings with chief and kind of discussed some of the ward issues, just kind of really taken a lot of initiative. And I just kind of wanted to recognize her for, for her efforts, and I also wanted to recognize Captain Henry for his efforts with all these condemnations. I mean, we've come a long way in a short amount of time, and, uh, he's done a lot of good work on it. We appreciate what he's doing. I know the last few meetings, he's probably taken some shots to the face, but as far as, uh, he's been doing a great job, so I just wanted to keep it up. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, now unfinished business. Uh, we have the third reading, Lord, it's number seven forty-eight, on advisory committees. I'm gonna ask, uh, Ms. Totty if she will read that order, please.
Ordinance number seven forty-eight, twenty twenty-five, an ordinance replace, repealing and replacing ordinance sixteen, two thousand sixteen. Establishing advisory committees that function solely to make recommendations to the mayor and city council for the city of Truman, Arkansas, and defining their structure and responsibilities. Whereas the city council of the city of Truman recognizes the need for an organized and efficient advisory committee structure to assist in governance and policy development. And whereas the council desires to formally establish certain advisory committees, outline their membership duties and procedures, and affirm their advisory only role to the mayor and city council. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Truman, Arkansas, section one, establishment of an advisory, of advisory committees. The following advisory committees are hereby established and shall serve only in an advisory capacity to the mayor and city council. These committees shall not exercise legislative, executive, or administrative authority, and their recommendations shall not be binding on the city of Truman. Finance committee, replacing the former budget committee. Public Works Committee, water, sewer, streets, parks, sanitation. Public Safety Committee, replacing the former fire and police, along with transportation committees. Personnel Policy Committee, standing committees will remain intact, sports, recreation, and events. Truman Industrial Development and Code Enforcement have been established by their, by other ordinances. Section two, committee membership and meetings. Each advisory committee shall consist of seven members and include at least two council members, one from each seat. Remaining members will be recommended by the mayor from the community as needed. The mayor and appropriate department head shall serve as non-voting ex officio members of each committee. Committee meeting schedule, Finance Committee, last Monday of each quarter, or as requested in writing by at least four committee members. Public Works Committee, first Tuesday of each quarter, or as requested in writing by at least four committee members. Public Safety Committee, third Tuesday of each quarter, or as requested in writing by at least four committee members. Other committees will meet as needed with meetings called by the mayor or requested by at least two committee members. Sports Recreation and Events Committee will meet according to its ordinance. Each committee shall report its recommendations only at the next regular meeting of the city council. Section three, terms of service. Committee members shall serve for a term of two years with appointments made during the month of January each year. Councilmember representatives shall always serve two-year terms on advisory committees. Terms shall be staggered so that each committee will always include at least one council member with a minimum of one year of service on that committee. This structure ensures continuity and preserves institutional knowledge across all advisory committees. No council member shall serve on more than two advisory committees simultaneously. Citizen members who are currently serving on other city advisory committees shall not serve on advisory committees concurrently. Section four, appointments. Committee membership shall be recommended by the mayor and approved by two-thirds vote of the city council. Appointments should reflect the qualifications and interest of council members when possible. If a vacancy occurs due to, due to the departure of a council member, their successor shall assume their committee seat. All other vacancies shall be filled using the standard appointment process. Section five, committee chairpersons. Committee chairpersons shall be appointed by the mayor and must be current members of the city council. All advisory committee meetings shall be conducted as public meetings in accordance with applicable law. The committee chair, in conjunction with the mayor, is responsible for ensuring that an official agenda is prepared and that minutes of each meeting are recorded by the city clerk according to the ordinance establishing job duties of the city clerk. Public notice of meetings and filing of appropriate minutes shall be carried out by the designate of the mayor or city clerk upon receipt from the committee chair. Section six, purpose. The purpose of this ordinance is to provide structured transparency and continuity in the governance of the city of Truman. These committees shall serve in an advisory capacity only to support the mayor and city council in making informed decisions that benefit the residents of Truman. Section seven, repeal of conflicting ordinances. All ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section eight, advisory review. Any issue which falls within the jurisdiction of an advisory committee may be reviewed by the appropriate committee. Upon completion of its review, the committee may report its recommendations to the city council at the next regular meeting. Subject matter. The subject matter for each of the standing committees shall be as follows. Finance committee shall have the responsibility of hearing and making recommendations to the city council on matters concerning budgeting. Public Works Committee shall have the responsibility of hearing recommendations to the city council on matters concerning streets, parks, buildings, insurance maintenance, flood and drainage, matters of public right of way, and solid waste. Public Safety Committee shall have the responsibility of hearing recommendations to the city council on all matters concerning public health and safety, transportation, animal control, fire protection, police protection. In addition to the above, the following jurisdictional assignments shall serve as general guidelines for the types of matters each advisory committee may review. The mayor shall determine the proper placement of any issue within the jurisdiction of an advisory committee. Once assigned, that committee shall have the responsibility of hearing the matter and making recommendations to the city council. This advisory committee process is intended to allow for additional review, deliberation, and input related to issues which the council may consider. Any recommendations made by an advisory committee to the council are strictly advisory and are non-binding upon the council. Effective date, section nine, effective date. This ordinance will go into effect January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-sixth, if passed by the city council.
All right, do I hear a motion to approve? Some more.
Second.
Jason Stewart made a motion to approve, seconded by Brandon Schrader. Any discussion? And no discussion. Roll call, please, Ms. Totty.
Cindy Wood.
Four.
Candita Robson, absent. Kara Roach.
Four.
Billy Poe.
Four.
Jason Stewart.
Four.
John Paul Tom, John Paul Thompson, absent. Ernie Link.
Four.
Brandon Schrader.
Four.
Bonnie Winkles, absent. Brett Parker.
Four.
Motion passes. All right, new business. First new business is Resolution number thirteen oh eight. This is the budget for twenty twenty-six. Uh, Mrs. Totty, would you read the resolution, please?
Resolution number thirteen oh eight, twenty twenty-five, a resolution for the adoption of the twenty twenty-six municipal budget. Resolution providing for the adoption of a budget for the city of Truman, Arkansas, for the twelve months beginning January first, twenty twenty-six, and ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, appropriating money for each item of expenditure there and provided for and, and for other purposes. Whereas the Truman City Council has made a comprehensive study and review of the proposed budget submitted by the mayor, and whereas it is the, it is the finding and conclusion of the city, Truman City Council, that the schedules exhibits of anticipated revenues and expenditures for the calendar year appear to be as accurate as possible for budgetary purposes. Now therefore be it resolved by the Truman City Council of Truman, Arkansas. Section one, this resolution shall be known as the Budget Resolution for the city of Truman, Arkansas, for the twelve-month period beginning January first, twenty twenty-sixth, and ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-sixth. The attached budget is incorporated herein as if set out word for word and figure for figure, reflecting salaries of all elected officials, salaries of all city employees, and the estimated revenue and expenditures as set forth on the succeeding pages. Section two, the respective funds for each item of expenditure proposed in the budget for twenty twenty-sixth are hereby approved and adopted for the operation of the city of Truman, Arkansas, by the Truman City Council on this date, and constitute an appropriation of funds which are lawfully applicable to the link to the items contained within the budget. This budget may be altered or revised by action of this governing body, and unpledged funds may be subsequently appropriated to another except as prohibited by law. Whereas the efficient operation of the municipal government requires that a budget be planned and adopted by the governing body, and that without a budget, the city may not pay its bills, debits, or liabilities. Therefore, this resolution shall be enforced on January first, twenty twenty-sixth. Twenty twenty-sixth, city of Truman, Arkansas budget. General fund, revenues, eight million, three hundred fifty thousand, eight hundred. Appropriations, five million, seven hundred eighty-six, uh, dollars and, sorry, five million, seven hundred eighty-six, three hundred seventy dollars. Street fund, eight hundred seventy-one thousand, two hundred fifty dollars. Appropriations, eight hundred sixty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars. TPD equitable sharing, five thousand, thirty-seven dollars, revenues and appropriations, five thousand. Capital equipment, revenues, two hundred thirty-one thousand, six hundred sixty, appropriations, one hundred eighty thousand. Disaster fund, revenues, fifty-one thousand, one hundred, appropriations, forty-five thousand, fifty. Special enforcement.
TIDC.
TIDC, I'm sorry, I missed a line. TIDC revenues is nine hundred eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred fifty-nine, appropriations, nine hundred eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred fifty-seven. Special enforcement revenues, fifteen thousand, and appropriations, fifteen thousand. Public Works, Truman Water Works, Sanitation, Mosquito, is to be in nine hundred sixteen thousand, appropriations to be in seven hundred ninety-one thousand, nine hundred fifty. TWW revenue bond, revenue is sixty-three thousand, four hundred fifty, appropriations, sixty-three thousand, four hundred fifty. FD Act eight thirty-three, revenues, ninety-five thousand, appropriations, ninety-five thousand. General Fund Two, revenues, two hundred twelve thousand, four hundred, appropriations, two hundred ten thousand. TWW infrastructure, revenues, five hundred forty-three thousand, appropriations, four hundred seventy thousand. Total revenues, fourteen million, three hundred forty-three thousand, five hundred fifty-six, appropriations, eleven million, five hundred nineteen thousand, one hundred seventy-seven.
All right, do I hear a motion to approve? Some more. Jason Stewart made a motion to approve.
Second. Second.
Brandon Schrader's second. Any discussion? Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose with no. Next up is Resolution number thirteen oh nine. Uh, this is for two-point-eight percent COLA raise for the mayor's position. It is included in the budget, uh, as is a two-point-eight percent COLA raise for all employees. Uh, Mrs. Totty, would you read the resolution, please?
Resolution thirteen oh nine, twenty twenty-five, a resolution establishing a cost of living raise for the mayor. Whereas the city council of Truman, Arkansas, recognizes the importance of maintaining fair and competitive compensation for the mayor to ensure the continued effective and dedicated service to the residents of Truman. And whereas in response to rising living costs, the city council has determined that an increase in the mayor's annual compensation in the form of a cost of living adjustment COLA of two-point-eight percent, which is the national COLA rate, is warranted and is recommended by the city of Truman Finance Committee. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Truman, Arkansas, section one, that effective January first, twenty twenty-sixth, the mayor shall receive a cost of living adjustment COLA of twenty, of two-point-eight percent to the current base salary. Section three, this resolution shall become effective upon its passage and approval by the Truman City Council.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
Cindy Wood made a motion.
I'll say.
Jason Stewart's second. Any discussion?
I have a question. Did I, should I say section two? I'm not gonna make this wrong. It says section one, then it goes to section three.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Yeah, that's the type of. You want to amend your motion to, you want, you're saying you're second?
Yeah.
You want to amend your motion to, as amended.
Yes.
Cindy Wood made a motion to approve Resolution thirteen oh nine, as amended to section two instead of three.
Yes.
Jason Stewart makes a second. Any discussion?
Two-point-eight, is that what all employees are getting?
Yeah, that's the federal, uh, COLA for the living street.
Sure.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose with no.
Second.
All right. Next up is, uh, thirteen-ten. Now you've got two thirteen-tens in your packet. Uh, this one, the one we will be reading, is thirteen-ten, a resolution establishing a raise for the clerk, city clerk due to added duties imposed by ordinance number seven hundred forty-eight. Uh, Mrs. Totty, would you read the, and by the way, it is included in the budget. Uh, Mrs. Totty, would you read the resolution, please?
Resolution number thirteen-ten, twenty twenty-five, a resolution establishing a raise for the city clerk due to added duties imposed by ordinance seven forty-eight, twenty twenty-five. Whereas the city council of Truman, Arkansas, recognizes the importance of maintaining fair and competitive compensation for the city clerk to ensure the continued effective and dedicated service to the residents of Truman. And whereas in response to added duties that were imposed due to the passage of ordinance seven forty-eight, twenty twenty-five, the city council has determined that an increase in the city clerk's annual compensation is warranted and is recommended by the city of Truman Finance Committee and is budgeted to reflect the salary of twenty-four thousand annually. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Truman, Arkansas.
Again, just because a condemnation is made does not mean that, that Mr. Hill's gonna have to tear his house down in ninety days. We've, we've done, and, and I'm, I'm getting agreement, I hope, from the remainder of the council, so. I just wanted to clarify that, to make sure that we're, we all are on the same page. You know, to get things to look better in Truman, it's gonna take a little, lack of a better term, a little tough love, so. That, that's all I. Yeah, it was exactly, because we have had, this council has, and then not necessarily everybody on this council, Brett was on with me during that time period, but we've had houses in the past where. They would sit and the condemnation went through and, and. Well, actually, it did not go through. We offered them ninety days and three years later, we had to come back in and condemn the house again. So, uh, I think that's the big thing that, that the council needs to be prepared for is, you know, at that time, it's, it's one thing to condemn it. It's another thing to see the, the constituent to be able to do and make progress. I, I know Raymond for as long as I've been alive, so I, I believe when he says he's gonna do something, he's gonna do something, so.
And I can tell you this too, I promise you, we're, we're not gonna tear it down in ninety days.
Well, exactly, exactly, so.
We've already discussed that.
Alright, so I, like I said, I just, I just wanna make sure that the council is on the same page.
Alright, so the motion has been made and seconded to condemn the property. Roll call vote, please, Ms. Todd.
Cindy Wood, four. Candida Robinson, absent. Kara Roach, four. Billy Poe, four. Jason Stewart, four. John Paul Thompson, absent. Ernie Link, no. Brandon Schrader, four. Bonnie Winkles, absent. Brett Parker, four.
Thirteen, fourteen.
Got six, four. One no, and three absent.
Alright, so that will be, uh, it will be condemned. Again, you still have the ninety days to work on it, show significant improvement. And then come back to the council and petition for extra time on that, but it needs to show significant improvement.
So do we need to come back to the March meeting?
Uh, yes.
Which is the second Tuesday of the month, in March.
But what you need to do is you need to contact my office, uh, the first of March. And ask to be put on the agenda for this particular problem. And then, again, if you've shown improvement, I'm sure they'll give you more time, except we're with people doing that.
And let's talk all day, have the improvement.
Well, don't do that.
But we don't want that. I believe.
Yep.
I believe. Thank you, Mr. Hill.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Alright, next up is resolution thirteen fifteen. This is for four oh eight Ellis. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Cindy Wood made a motion.
A second.
Kara Roach, second. Is there anyone here to speak for or against? Four oh eight Ellis. What is your name, sir?
Good evening, I'm Jesus Nardino, chief of March, Spanish and Arabic. On behalf of Nancy Lasagna, she's my mom, uh, four eight has been condemned and we're not really fighting that condemnation, it needs to be turned down, turned down. The thing is that.
Four oh eight?
Four eight.
No, it's not been condemned, that's what this is.
Oh, it's not, it's been suggested for condemnation.
That's what this is.
And we're not really gonna fight that, the thing is, um, it's not legal, we have to do that, it is going. However, uh, we were trying to build a temporary shed because we bought some materials and we started in that house. And we were gonna build a shed, move the materials to the shed and then tear down that house. However, we got a complaint, I guess, uh, the building was being, the shed was being built and they stopped us. And, um, what I'm basically asking, I guess, is permission to build a temporary shed. So we can move the materials to the shed, tear down the house and then try to build a, a nice house in there. Right now, the code says that there's, there needs to be a livable, uh, structure, however, um. However, we, we can do the shed, we can't do the structure, but, uh, this structure can be built.
We can't tear their house down to build a livable structure.
Yeah.
And so we can build some other sheds to put the stuff inside, so we, we got pretty sweet stuff.
Yeah, and I understand what you're saying, uh, the only thing with that, that I'm looking at, the way I see it, is, again, you could, you should be able to build a shed within ninety days.
Yes, yeah, I should be able to do it in a week after it.
Yeah, so I mean, what I'm saying, you, you know, get all your permits and get everything right the way it's supposed to be, and you should be able to, within ninety days, have that.
But I can't get approved because there's not.
Because what?
Yeah, the zoning code says you can't build an accessory building unless you own, own a lot, unless you have a primary structure there. If you don't have a primary structure there, they have something, like he said, when we, it needs to be tore down, and I do understand where he's coming from, but like I said, him. That's, that's, it's against the zoning laws, that's something that, where they wanted to bring, I guess, to the planning and zoning, to maybe ask for a variance or something else, depend on their circumstances, if that's the legal way of doing that, unless, unless. Representative Gadsdenway has a different suggestion, that's how, that's what he usually does, that's what the zoning laws say. But otherwise, yeah, you can't, no one else has been allowed to do it, and so, I mean, you know, we couldn't, didn't build a shed.
I have, I have the zoning permission, I feel though, the council's part of the others, that's actually what we did, so, I mean, it definitely is not actually.
Yeah, well, I'm, it's gonna be obviously up to, up to the council members, looking at the pictures, I've got a lot of concern about it, so.
Can you not build a shed at four hundred Ellis?
No, and he also said that we can't build a shed there.
It's, 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 there's a long story to it. I mean, if y'all wanna hear the story, if y'all wanna hear the story later, I can tell you the story later, I can tell you all of it right now.
We'll take, get your word, we believe.
I tell you what, you want to.
So, at this point, uh, we've got a motion and a second.
I got a secondary question.
And that's what I was just fixing to ask, before we go anywhere else, do we have any other questions? Go ahead.
So. Like for construction trailers, we were, what's the code for that?
What do you mean?
Well, in certain aspects, like when the housing authority was working on a lot of those, uh.
Temporary storage?
Te- like temporary storage, because in all honesty.
They wanted to build a site, build a shed that'll be there, another temporary storage shed that'll be removed.
I, I, I understand that, I'm, I'm looking for a way for these folks to be able to get it done and get the house tore down. And understanding that, if a construction trailer, if they can rent one of those for sixty, ninety days, and then have it removed. Then they can go in and build their full-time shed, so.
We don't have space to drop the trailer, the house is right smack in the middle, and we already have some issues with our neighbor of, uh.
Using his yard to.
Yeah.
Even rent for the.
So we gotta, we wanna.
What, what are the setbacks on that, beside your.
Oh man, I have to look at that, one lot that they live on is a half lot, the lot next to it is very small as well. I don't know if you remember, he came with the variance, but the, like, the half lot for building the house, so, I mean. I think his problem he's saying is there's a house in front, there's no way to pull a, a shed in there without. Encroaching on the neighbor's property, the neighborhood absolutely will not allow him to have any type of right of way on his property. So he's kinda, he's on the corner lot and there's not really access to get back there, like what he's saying, I understand what he's saying, 'cause I, I drive by it, I don't know, a thousand times.
Yeah, we, we wanna tear that house down, I mean, I kind of came up with it, but we can't do it. Uh, uh, we need some type of way to store that stuff, so we have like, we think that's.
And that's my opinion, but what it's worth, like, I mean, condemn the house, 'cause they're gonna, will tear it down anyway, and then they can apply if they want to for a variance. You know, for something for the shed, for something to get built temporarily to help them out, and let the planning and zoning make a decision.
Well, I'd like to see things work out, personally, uh, and, and like to be able to figure out a way to work it out.
And Jason don't plan anything, does he, Brad?
Jason is on planning and zoning.
Could, could they not?
That's why I was asked the question about the temporary.
Yeah.
And I get what you're saying, and those are really good questions, but like he said, with the specifications on the lot, there's just like, there's no way for them to get, they can't go around any of the signs, 'cause there's a house right next to them.
Do you have.
Their house is right next door.
Do you have room at your house to park the trailer, if you used, go and fill it up, come park it at your house and then take it back to work?
Yeah, my house is a half lot. It, it's really, it's literally one lot to work, and it's already a half lot. We actually came like a year before, trying to get friends, man, we made a pot of, and.
He can't even.
Yeah, so.
We have no space.
We got no space to do it.
Yeah, but they've done very well with the space that they have, a lot of improvements, and it looks really good.
Could you put the material in a storage unit?
We actually thought about that too, but, uh, it's very expensive, we would need a big storage unit, and last time I checked, it was like four hundred dollars a month. And, well, that could be used to tear down the house and, you know.
But it would just be temporary?
Yeah, but build the building itself, building the house itself is, is, uh, takes.
So, yeah, I, just so I, I can understand, but are you trying to salvage material from the house you're tearing down?
No, we got new material, we got new material, we were gonna build the shed, we bought, we bought material for that shed. We also bought some material for the house, but it didn't work out the way it's thought, so, uh, now we, we can, and we can't return the material, but it's over.
So the new material is in the house and needs to be torn back?
Yeah. Yeah. And we can't even outside.
And you have it secured? The house is secured for you almost?
The best we can, I mean, they, he said the whole thing. We can't even outside, 'cause even if we rotted it, the rest we can, it's kinda wet, and, and.
I would think that a storage unit would be probably more secure than.
Yeah, for how?
In fact, they're getting a trailer, and I wasn't even in that, tough spot.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. Todd, a roll call vote, please.
Cindy Wood, four. Candida Robinson is absent. Kara Roach, four. Billy Poe, four. Jason Stewart, four. John Paul Thompson, absent. Ernie Link, four. Brandon Schrader, four. Bonnie Winkles is absent. Brett Parker, four.
I would personally would recommend, uh, go ahead and get your storage unit, it may cost you some money, but it's gonna, in the long run, it's gonna wind up being cheaper.
What do you mean, what do we possibly put in a variance for it to, that way we can start to build a shed?
For a shed.
For a shed.
You can put in a variance for that.
They can put in a request, but here's, here's our problem with that on planning, once we start issuing variances, we set precedents. And then, not saying that you guys would do this, but once you set a precedence, somebody decides they wanna come in and build a building on the lot. And then all of a sudden, now here we are, three, four, five years later, they've got a shed full of materials and no house being built, we've got an accessory building on a lot. And so that just, it can, it can get bad quick, and when you start setting precedents like that, we're just opening ourselves up to have a bunch of lots that have shops on them. And don't have an actual structure, so it's not actually, it, it's against code, so. I mean, you gotta have, the code's code, you, you, you gotta have rules, right, so. That's, I'm, I'm, I'm just saying, that's, that's, that's what we've got to consider when that comes before planning and zoning, so. You know, you, you guys have the right to be able to request the variance, and I just want you to be prepared for, uh, the potential of what could happen. They could authorize it, you know, as a one-time situation, but, uh, just be prepared.
I was gonna, well, uh, we could request a variance, like we're under a commission or something like that, but you might already answer, you have the right to request, and then we'll just find a way to.
It'd be up to the planning and zoning commission, and they meet on the third Tuesday of, of every month. It's the third Tuesday.
It's next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, oh, yeah, sixteen, so. Get with Gary, if you wanna get on the, on the, before, uh, you know, before you, uh, spend the money for the, for the actual, um. Variance, I would, I would actually come and talk to the commission next week. Just, uh, but, uh, get with him or, or Ms. Todd, we'll get on the agenda.
Well, as of now, we got ninety days to clear it out.
That's correct.
Did we hold on?
I thought, do we?
Yeah, we did hold on.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, at this time, uh, before we go to number thirteen sixteen, we're gonna take a five-minute break to use the restroom, if you need to go. So we, we, we will reconvene at seven forty.
Yeah, our left and right are only have good neighbors, you know?
Oh, yeah, no. He did. Yeah, me too.
Call my mama.
Call my mama. Can you hook your boy?
He gonna get it.
Super weird. Come on, I'm just so, I had a, I had a tumor, I had a tumor about the side of a, a little bigger than a golf ball.
Yeah, they took it off, it was on my spine, yeah, they, yeah, I got, my portal says something, but I can't understand that doctor's job, I'm taking it away tomorrow. And I drove to the clinic, let them look at it, surely if it's cancer, they didn't go. He just kept growing, growing, growing. Yeah, I worked yesterday and today, and my neck did hurt here, but it hasn't.
Yeah, that's right.
Are you getting any rest? You know the answer.
You're welcome. Are you, what are you doing? I'm sorry, Brett broke a call. I said, I'm sorry, Brett broke a call.
Yeah, we saw the problem, that's why we, just a long line. I've always wanted to go that riverwalk. Is there where the military bases? No, wait a minute. I'm, I'm off, you know, it's, uh. I've been to Austin, played softball there a couple times. Eleventh Street, very, very. Won't be here, huh?
Won't be here.
Yeah. Eleventh Street's like a, a Bill, like a Bill Street, kinda not as rough out, yeah, true, it's, um, musical places.
Talking about that? I've been by that. Alright, if we can take our seats, please.
Bam, bam, bam.
We need to take our seats, please. Alright, we are back in session in the, who?
Clerk's not back.
Oh, well, she hides over there, I can't, I can't see her.
Paging Ms. Todd. Reminds me of Peter Herman, paging Mr. Herman. Mr. Herman, you have a call.
Holding everybody up.
Sorry.
Sorry, caller's speed bump.
Alright, now everybody's back, and we will pick up where we left off at thirteen sixteen. This is for five twenty Louis. Do I hear a motion to condemn? Kara Roach made a motion. I'm sorry, who was that? Brandon Schrader, second. Is there anyone here to speak for or against five twenty Louis? Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose with no. Next up is thirteen seventeen. This is for six thirty six Monroe. Do I hear a motion to condemn? Kara Roach made a motion. Brandon Schrader, second. Is there anyone here to speak for or against this resolution for six thirty six Monroe? If not, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose with no. Next is resolution number thirteen eighteen. This is for seven eleven Ellis. Do I hear a motion to condemn? Brandon Schrader made a motion. Cindy Wood, second. Is there anyone here to speak for or against this resolution to condemn seven eleven Ellis? Yes, sir, and what is your name?
Jerry Martin.
Jerry Martin?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Martin, you're recognized, go ahead, what do you, what do you got on that?
This is my mom and dad's house. They broke in thirty years ago, pulled their furniture and stuff. I went into it, I'm taking pictures of them inside the house, and the walls are still good, the hardwood floor inside the house is good. The only place where the roof is bad is in the, my back porch area, where they had built, uh, made it to the storage. And on the front porch, both, both brackets, and the first one, they didn't build the back one, they built it wrong, they had it angled lower in the back against the house than it is in front. From the outside, so the water built up there, and of course, uh. I can remember two quarters, what they used, used for the roof there, and that rock in the way, it comes from water and stuff goes up on it. On the front side, it covers the leaves, and goes up on the gutter. It has a second porch area, it's in the pits, and has some siding, home front end room where it drained down on it, and it's in the pits. Like I said, the inside of the house is still solid, it's solid in it.
Mr. Henry, can you talk on this?
I'm just staying by the photographs in the condemnation process, it's been there for a long time, it has been occupied for a long time, we've had numerous.
Oh, numerous.
Numerous complaints over the years on this house, there's a structure next to it also that could probably go along as well, but we've had the majority of our women complaints are on the main structure. I said, I think it needs to be condemned and raised or moved within ninety days.
So you got plans for it?
My parents, my parents, uh, are, I'm living down in Herb, her, now, uh, they, they're coming out of, questioning, uh, the.
Mr. Henry, how long has this been vacant?
Long time.
When did your parents pass? So it's been vacant that long?
It's been vacant longer than that.
I'm, I'm telling you this, I'm.
Right, right, and I mean, I'm not, like, am I trying to argue, I'm just saying, I mean, I live by, I remember I lived by it at one time back in the early nineties when I first moved here, and your dad and your mom lived there, took care of it and everything. Yeah, it just is what it is.
Just by looking at, yeah, just by looking at the pictures, I mean, it's, nothing has even been attempted to, to be done or, or clean, at least keep it clean outside.
And again, this is strictly talking about the structure, so we know I'm not talking about, you know, a lot of people bring up the yard, we're not talking about the yard, any of that, strictly the structure of the house.
Yep.
Did anybody show, uh, pictures that it was taken last week?
Anybody, anybody having questions for? Mr. Martin on this.
I did fourth time, and then kind of, but. It's just getting, getting people to do it, and people told me that they would load the lawn, so. I got a guy now that I can, I can have him work for every week, but I can't load the lawn, it comes in, it's a front end.
Any more questions or comments for Mr. Martin or on the house? Ms. Todd, a roll call vote, please, on thirteen eighteen for seven eleven Ellis.
Cindy Wood, four. Candida Robinson is absent. Kara Roach, four. Billy Poe, four. Jason Stewart, four. John Paul Thompson is absent. Ernie Link, four. Brandon Schrader, four. Bonnie Winkles, absent. Brett Parker, four.
Same thing with you, Mr. Martin, uh, just like everybody else, and we've told the same thing, you've got, if you can show significant improvement on that house within ninety days, you can come back and petition, uh, the council to give you an extension on it. Not to remove the condemnation, but to give you an extension. Uh, if not, then, uh, it will go on the list to be torn down, and if it's torn down, uh, it will be, uh, you know, you'll be sent a bill to tear it down, if we have to tear it down. Uh, so, I'm gonna say, you either need to get it torn down within ninety days, or you need to have some very significant improvements on the house. I don't know about that, you, you, after the council, you can talk to Mr. Henry about that, or you can come to the office and talk to him tomorrow, so, yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Alright, next up is, uh, thirteen nineteen. This is for twenty, two twenty-two West Speedway. Uh, do I hear a motion for condemnation? Brandon Schrader made a motion. I'll say it. Cindy Wood, oh, that was Kara, when it, Kara Roach, second. Is there anyone here to speak for or against two twenty-two West Speedway? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose with no. Alright, I'll take care of that. Just a second, let me get to where we're. Alright. Next, we have an ordinance that's coming out of the Planning and Zoning Commission, it's ordinance number seven forty-nine, is to amend the dumpster zoning code. Uh, Mr. Stewart is the chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission, I'm gonna ask him to speak on this, please.
So if, if, uh, the council will remember, it's, it's probably been. Six months ago, uh, there was a lot of complaints coming in about, uh, debris and, uh, contents of, of, uh. Dumpsters being blown and strewn about across, uh, different parts of the, of the city, so, uh, the planning and zoning was asked to look at. An ordinance or a, at least a plan on how dumpster enclosures. An ordinance or a, at least a plan on how dumpster enclosures should be, uh, made. We did lengthy, lengthy study, we, uh, we have one of our commissioners who is a civil engineer, who has worked with City of Jonesboro, and worked with, uh, a couple of other cities around, and, uh, we were able to find some co- zoning codes from a couple of different places. Uh, over in the western part of the state, as well as Jonesboro, we were able to adapt those to what we thought would be best for Truman, Arkansas. And keep in mind, this is not a retroactive ordinance, this is for new construction, uh, or change of occupancy, so this would only apply to, uh. Buildings where if, if the change of occupancy caused, uh, a change of use in the building, where the, the, if the, if the, if the business owner, uh, was used to using a rollout cart, uh, and then they sold it to a different, uh, type of business who would require the use of a dumpster or something to that effect. A change of occupancy, change of use, would necessitate the potential for this. Also with new construction, we tried to keep sound, um, building practices in with this, so, uh, what you can see is what we've come up with.
Ms. Tati, would you read ordinance number seven forty-nine, please?
Ordinance number seven forty-nine dash twenty twenty-five, an ordinance to amend ordinance number six sixty-one, known as the zoning ordinance, providing the addition of dumpster enclosure and ballard detail for all zoning districts and for other purposes. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Truman, Arkansas, section one. Ordinance number six sixty-one, known as the zoning ordinance of the City of Truman, Arkansas, is hereby amended to include dumpster enclosure and ballard detail requirements applicable to all zoning districts as set forth in the attachment labeled Exhibit A. Dumpster, dumpster enclosure and ballard detail which is incorporated herein by reference. Section two, that ordinance number six sixty-one, known as the zoning ordinance of the City of Truman, Arkansas, is hereby amended to include dumpster enclosure and ballard detail requirements applicable to all zoning districts as set forth in the attachment labeled Exhibit A. Dumpster enclosure and ballard, which is incorporated herein by reference. Section three, any existing dumpster installation that does not comply with the requirements of Exhibit A as of the effective date of this ordinance shall be deemed illegal non-conforming use and may continue in its present condition and location. If, if such a dumpster is replaced, relocated, or undergoes substantial renovation or site development full of compliance with the dumpster enclosure and ballard detail standards adopted herein shall be required at, at that time. Routine maintenance or repair of exist- existing dumpsters shall not be construed as a substantial alteration requiring compliance. Nothing in this section shall be interpreted to prevent maintenance of a condition that constitutes a public nuisance or safety hazard. Section three, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict. Section four, if any section, paragraph, subdivision, clause, phrase, or provision of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid or unconstitutional. Such adjudication shall not affect the validity of the ordinance or any section, provision, or part thereof not adjudged invalid or unconstitutional. Section five, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval as provided by law.
All right, do you hea- do I hear a motion to approve? Okay. And make a motion to amend? This to section, the second section three, it'll be four, section four to five, section five to six. This was a big packet, I called myself proofreading all of this.
I did too, and I missed it.
That mo- that motion has been made, do I hear a second? Second by Carol Roach.
Who, who made the motion?
Cindy Wood. Any discussion on that part? All in favor say aye. Oppose with no. I thought I did, did I not ask for discussion, I'm sorry if I didn't. Any discussions on this being amended to section four, five, and six? Well, this is not on the ordinance itself. This is just on the amendment.
Yeah, amending the numbering, yeah.
Okay, so you, you good with that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we got that cleared up, it's been amended. Now, do I hear a motion to approve ordinance seven forty-nine as amended? Jason Stewart made a motion. Carol Roach's second. Now, is there any discussion on the? Counsel first.
I had seen the, the drawing at some point, I, I didn't see it in the packet, but has that changed, and what is? A realistic cost for that, or do we know? Is it just a concrete walls with yellow ballards? Does color make a difference?
Mister Henry, can you speak on that?
I'm not sure. However, the planning is only recommended.
The, uh, the construction of it does not require and necessitate that it be, well, that would be great, right?
Right.
Um, it, it'd look better aesthetically, it'd be a lot better, but there's nothing that necessitates that. The main thing that we were looking at is number one, was the sta- uh, the, the foundation, the actual concrete going in, cause. Trash, uh, du- dump trucks and trash trucks are notoriously hard on, on stuff, and that's another reason for the ballards, to keep. Once they do have that thing built, that you're not knocking it over with a, with a, with a sanitation truck. Estimated costs, depending on what you wanna do, probably a base cost depend- because of the concrete work and, and the, uh, the ballards. You're probably looking at around four to five thousand on the, on the low end of one of those enclosures. And again, this is, this is, this is targeted towards new construction. Most of the, most of the new construction we're seeing come in, when you, you start looking at places like, uh. Any of the fast food joints that have come into town, they're already doing this, that's part of their code for when they go in to build a building. Uh, you're not gonna see something like this with most of your, you're gonna see something like this with, uh, most of your retail outlets that are, that are gonna come in. Um. And it's, y- you know. Ultimately, it's gonna come up to the landowner, own the landowner. Uh, that, that has built those, so some of the folks that are doing shopping malls and, or strip malls and things like that, could it adversely affect them? It's gonna be part of the, the upfront building cost and, and, uh, some of the, some of our, um, apartment complexes that are gonna be coming in, should we, should we get additional? If they're gonna put in one of these for.
So anyone leasing spaces should be fine, because they're not gonna obviously be doing any kind of.
Well, d- right, so.
So it's all gonna be on the owner.
It should be, because they're the ones that's gonna have to make modifications to their property, right? Now, are they gonna charge by lease, uh, less eve if they have to do that? There's, there's possibility. But again, it becomes costly doing business, right? So, uh, and most, most places are gonna still be able to utilize the same rollout carts that they're using now. And, and we're not telling that anybody that's got a dumpster currently, you've gotta go in and do this today. Yeah, and, you know, and we, we had long discussions about that during our, our planning zoning, I mean, what are you gonna do if you come in and you've got a brand new facility? And you got a law office, and a hair salon, and something else, and this nice little new strip mall, and, and, and a, a, a office complex. Well, all three of them probably gonna use rollout carts, they're not in a big retail where they're knocking down corrugated cartons all day long, and they don't need a large. Large dumpster. Now, if the property owner decides that he just, he doesn't want three rollout carts sitting out in front of his, his building, then it may be to where he wants to put in a dumpster, well, again, it's gonna be at his discretion if he wants to put in a dumpster.
So, where it says that any, um. Question on, if a dumpster is replaced, relocated, or undergoes substantial renovations, can you just elaborate on that? I mean, if, say you're a dumpster that you've had for the last ten years sitting there, rot it out, got a hole in it, and they have to bring me in a dumpster, does that?
Yeah, no, that's, that's not gonna change, that's, that's not a change of, there's not a change of use. And it's not a change of, because. Right now, we're using Mark. Right?
Wait, 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 no, no. Commercial dumpsters have their own decision of who, and they have to pay for it.
Okay.
On commercial dumpsters, who they wanna use, so there is Mark, there is, uh.
Dedman?
Dedman's, and then there's another jo- a waste, man of waste something in Jonesboro.
Okay, so that, let's just say those three companies. Those things are gonna wear.
Yeah.
And they're gonna have to replace them, that's not what we're, that's not what we're dealing with.
Okay, so we're, it, because, I just wanna be clear, because it says.
Yeah, and this, this stays a normal name, so they're, yeah. So driving in, uh, earlier, there was a couple of places that have, currently have wooden enclosures around there. There's some privacy pegs that are, uh, planks that are actually coming off. We're not talking about them going in and fixing those, that's not what we're talking about, we're talking about change of use, complete redesign, tearing everything out and then going back in. That's where you gotta come back in.
It might like the Checkers building, old Checkers face the building and put a dumpster out there, I might have to build an enclosure around it.
Is there already a dumpster there?
I don't, I have no idea.
If there's not a dumpster there, and you're gonna put a dumpster there, then yes, it's change of use. If they were using, if they were using rollout carts prior to, and now, now all of a sudden you as an owner decide that you want or need a container, a, you know, a large container there, then, then yes. This one, that's will apply to you. Because again, it's change of use, change of occupancy.
Any other questions here on the council? Uh, because this is a, uh, uh, an issue that's, concerns a lot of people, uh, I will allow discussion from, uh, from the audience, but we will have to ha- limit it to the amount of time. Uh, anybody that wants to speak, you're more than welcome. Yes, ma'am. And I know you very well, but you need to introduce yourself.
I'm Noria Underwood, and I'm an animal clinic caring intern. Uh, this dumpster ordinance, I mean, I can see in these things wanting to look neat and nice, but for a small business owner, I mean, since we, this first came out, we thought that, like, everybody was gonna have to redo it. But let's say if I go and I remodel my building, even though I have a dumpster, am I gonna have to build a dumpster enclosure?
Are, are you moving your dumpster or changing the use of that dumpster?
The dumpster will be used for what it's used, but it may be possibly moved, I'm not sure it's not gonna have to be moved because of the highway coming through. Because the way the highways come and go there, I'm not sure if they're gonna, we're gonna have to have a different access point into my dumpster.
Well, that, in my opinion, that would be an extenuating cir- circumstance, considering the fact that there is a major highway move that's gonna be taking up part of your.
It's a force, it's a force change.
It's, yeah, so, uh, I think at that point, the, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission would have the discretion to authorize a variance in that situation.
I just feel that the dump, I mean, I see the need for why y'all want that, because if you'll drive around Truman, and you go look at all these businesses that have these enclosures, they look like crap. Because number one, they don't take care of them, the dump truck people tear them up, and so I can see it as a continued source of repair or an expense for a business owner. And I can see it being a detriment to somebody, and telling you, I'm gonna have to build this five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten thousand dollar dumpster being.
And I ca- I've looked at it on both ways, and I can see both sides of the whole thing. Uh, from my office and getting phone calls constantly about this street's got trash, and you go look at it, and it's coming from this dumpster. This street's got trash, it's coming from this dumpster. I can see there. Uh, of course, now, what I read in this ordinance is, uh, the wear and tear won't be coming from, or shouldn't be coming from the dump trucks, because the ballards are required in there to keep the bump, if the, they would hit that, it would be hit the dumpster. But now, over time, especially if you use wood, over time, it's gonna deteriorate, wind's gonna get a hold of it, and, and I know exactly what you're talking about, I, I see it myself, and I agree. Uh, I was talking with someone else about this, and ultimately, what it boils down to, is just like it is throughout the whole city. People have got to take responsibility for their stuff. And if they did that, we wouldn't even be talking about this. Unfortunately, they don't do that, just like some of these, and I'm not saying all of these, but some of these, uh, these, uh, condemnations, they're not being taken care of, and, you know, the city has to step up and do something. Uh, again, on this side here, I see both sides of it, and that's why, honestly, I'm glad I don't have a vote.
Because, you know, I'm also on property, that there's a possibility that at some point in time, I might build a new building, and that would very much be a detriment to me, and I'll have to spend another extra six to ten thousand dollars to have a place for the trash.
Anybody have any questions for Ms., Ms. Underwood? Or excuse me, Doctor Underwood? Anyone else? Counsel have any more comments, statements, or questions?
I, I think that's just where I'm at with it, it's just we've got, just worried about how it, how it trickles down to somebody who is just trying to survive, and there's a lot of businesses that are trying to keep their head above water, and then. We could kinda throw a little sink at it, I don't know if it'll affect them, but I could, it's like, well, definitely. This would be a free, free lead.
Correct, unless y'all change it. All right, Ms. Tati, roll call vote, please.
Cindy Wood, four. Candita Robinson's absent, Carol Roach? Billy Poe?
No.
Jason Stewart?
Four.
John Paul Thompson's absent, Ernie Link?
No.
Brandon Schrader?
Four.
Bonnie Winkle's absent, Brett Parker?
No.
So what's the count?
Got three no's.
It don't matter, it's not, it's not a four.
Yeah, that's what I was, that's what I wanted to find out. So, that does not pass. All right, um, next, we have three resolutions. We kinda talked about these a little bit, uh, Bill talked about them a little bit, we have three resolutions that we've gotta pass to be able to apply for these grants, uh, this grant for three new tornadoes. Uh, three no tw- three new tornado sirens, we don't need three more tornadoes. But three new sirens. Um. I, I mean, there's really not much more to say about those, they just kinda speak for themselves, but they have to be passed before we can apply for this particular grant. Uh, Ms. Tati, would you read resolution number thirteen twenty, please?
Resolution number thirteen twenty twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the submission of an application for ACEPD grant funds to the state of Arkansas. Whereas the City of Truman is applying for funds through Arkansas Community and Economic Development Program, and whereas it is necessary that certain conditions be met as part of the application requirements. And whereas the City of Truman has or will conduct a public hearing and has an act- active citizen participation plan, community development plan, and as part of the application process has re- received and considered comments on community development and housing needs and proposed activities. And whereas as a result of the community development planning activities, the City of Truman has identified and prioritized the community development and housing needs. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Truman, Arkansas, resolves that the mayor of City of Truman is hereby authorized on behalf of the City of Truman to submit an application to the state of Arkansas for grant funds under the community development provisions of the Arkansas Community and Economic Development Program, and to expend funds to accomplish such community development activities if the grant is awarded.
All right, so do I hear a motion to approve?
Second.
Brandon Schrader made a motion, Ernie Link's second. Uh, at this time, is there any discussion on, um. Whether we need tornado sirens or not? I didn't figure there would be. This is to replace three that were damaged during the, uh, April, uh, Mar- late March and early April, uh, storms that came through. So. Uh, and by the way, they're pretty expensive, they can be up to a hundred thousand dollars a piece.
Are they the ones gonna rotate?
Depends on how much money we get, what we get approved for, we're gonna get the best that we can get with the least amount of, what money we get, so.
They're better to rotate.
And I'm not gonna say that we might, it, depending on the cost, we might add a little bit to them to get them rotated, but we'll, we'll just have to see how that goes.
What three are out, if you don't mind me asking?
The one at Betty Street, the one at, uh, Twin Hickory, and the one at Sports Complex.
How many do we have?
Six, seven?
We have David Street, Ellis, Betty, uh, Mulberry, Forty Conne later.
That's Twin Hickory, yeah, so we got six. We've come a long way because when I first got on the con- on the council, we only had three. I am right on. So if we don't have any more co- uh, comments or questions about that, um, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed with no. Alright, that's thirteen twenty, thirteen twenty-one. I read this and kinda laughed. We've passed this a couple of times before, but it's, it's one of your, when you're going through, uh, uh, this process for this particular grant, you have to pass this resolution. Ms. Tati, resolution number thirteen twenty-one, please.
Resolution number thirteen twenty-one twenty-five, resolution establishing a policy prohibiting the use of excessive force by law enforcement agencies within the applicant's jurisdiction against individuals engaged in nonviolent civil rights demonstrations. Whereas the city of Truman is applying for Arkansas Community and Economic Development Program funding. Whereas required by the Housing and, and Community Development Act of nineteen seventy-four as amended, it shall be the policy of the city of Truman to ensure that the following are true. One, the city has adopted and is enforcing this policy prohibiting the use of excessive force by law enforcement agencies within its jurisdiction against any individuals engaged in nonviolent civil rights demonstrations. Two, the city will ensure that all law enforcement agencies within its jurisdiction will enforce all applicable state and local laws against physically barring entrance to or exit from a facility or location which is the subject of such nonviolent civil rights demonstrations within its juris- jurisdiction. Three, in response to nonviolent civil rights demonstrations, the city will be mindful and protective of the rights of all participants in such demonstrations as well as any onlookers, bystanders, or any other persons located in the vicinity or owning property in the vicinity. Four, in connection with such demonstrations, the use of force shall be permitted only when necessary to protect the rights of individuals or to uphold the law. In no event shall the use of force in excess of that necessary to achieve the, achieve the lawful goals of the city be permitted. Now therefore be it resolved that consistent with the goals and objectives of activities assisted under the act, as amended, the Truman City Council will adopt and enforce the policy contained herein.
Alright, do I hear a motion to approve? So move. Jay Stewart made a motion.
Second.
Kara Roach, second. Any, oh, I'm sorry, Cindy.
Cindy.
Uh, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed with no. And thirteen twenty-two. Ms. Tati, please read number thirteen twenty-two.
Resolution number thirteen twenty-two dash twenty twenty-five, a resolution of the city council of Truman, Arkansas to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute an an administrative contract with the East Arkansas Planning and Development District and will be for the administration of the A E D C Community Development Lot Grant Program for a community development project. Whereas the city of Truman, Arkansas is applying for funds under the Community Development Lot Grant Program administered by the Arkansas Economic Development Commission, A E D C for an Arkansas Community and Economic Development Program project. And whereas in order to accom- accomplish the goals and objectives of the program, it is necessary to obtain a grant administrator and whereas the city of Truman, Arkansas desires to retain the East Arkansas Planning and Development District, E A P D D, to provide administrative services contingent upon funding by A E D C and whereas the administrative services to be performed in the cost of administration of the project shall be negotiated with the A E D C upon the notification of funding approval. And whereas the cost of administration shall be payable from A E D C funds and will be part of a grant amount awarded to the city of Truman, Arkansas. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor of the city of Truman, Arkansas and the city clerk are hereby authorized to contract with the E A P D D to administer the project should the city receive funding.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion.
Ernie Link made a motion.
I'll second.
Jason Stewart, second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed with no. Alright, let's take share of that one. We're getting close. The last, last resolution tonight is number thirteen twenty-three. It is a cleanup lien on seven fifteen North Pine. This is a resolution to certify the cost and to place a lien on the property. We did this, uh, should've been doing this on a lot of properties, but finally got the structure on how to get it done and how to do it. So we're doing this now on properties that we raise. Um, Mrs. Tati, will you read the resolution, please?
Resolution number thirteen twenty-three twenty twenty-five, a resolution certifying the amount of a cleanup lien to be filed with the Pointe County Tax Collector against certain real property located at seven fifteen North Pine in the city of Truman, Arkansas and for other purposes. Whereas certain property located at seven fifteen North Pine in the city of Truman, Arkansas was declared to be a public nuisance and the property was condemned on November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. See real, resolution number twelve thirty-five, twenty twenty-three attached here too as exhibit A. And whereas Arkansas Code annotated fourteen dash fifty-four dash nine oh three provides that if the owner or lien holder or any lot or structure of any lot or structure after having been given seven days notice and ready to do so refuses to remove, abate, or eliminate any nuisance property, the city of Truman is authorized to do whatever is necessary to correct the conditions and charge the cost thereof to the owner of the real property. And whereas according to the Pointe County Assessors Office, parcel number five 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 dash zero zero four seven seven dash zero 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 described as seven fifteen North Pine, Arx- Truman, Arkansas is owned by deed Capital Ventures LLC who after receiving notice from the city regarding the conditions of the property has failed to abate the conditions and whereas pursuant to Arkansas Code annotated fourteen dash fifty-four dash nine oh one at sec and act eight fifty-four of two, of two thousand and seven, the city of Truman is authorized to abate the nuisance conditions established a lien for the cost associated therewith and collect the same in order to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the community. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Truman, Arkansas, section one, that upon appearing, upon a hearing of the facts, the city council hereby declares that the, that proper notice was given to the owner and lien holders of the subject property to re- to remove, abate, or eliminate the public nuisance conditions on the subject property location at seven fifteen North Pine, more specifically described as lot five of block one, C H Allen to the city of Truman, Pointe County, Arkansas, parcel number five 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 dash zero zero four seven seven dash zero 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 zero. Section two, that the city council further declares that the owner and lien holders of the subject property failed to remove, abate, or eliminate the public nuisance conditions at the property after it was condemned pursuant to resolution number twelve thirty-five dash twenty twenty-three in the time allowed by law and the city then abated the n- public nuisance conditions at a cost of no less than seven thousand nine hundred and seven dollars, eighty-six cents. See affidavit attached here too as exhibit B. Section three, that, that the city council further declares that the property notice was given to the owner and lien holders of the subject property, that a public hearing would be held on April twenty-seventh, two thousand and nine. See affidavit of, uh, statutory lien attached here too as exhibit C to determine the proper amount, if any, that should be filed as a cleanup lien pursuant to act eight fifty-four of two thousand and seven. Section four, that the city council further declares that upon presentation of facts at a public hearing, the city is entitled to a priority cleanup lien in the amount of seven thousand nine hundred and seven dollars and eighty-six cents against the subject property and that this amount shall hereby be filed with the Pointe County Tax Collector. Section five, that the, that if the owner or lien holders fail to pay the amount of the, of the herein certified cleanup lien in the time allowed by law, the city attorney is hereby directed to pursue any and all proper legal actions for collection of the amount of said lien plus all applicable cost. Section six, that the provisions of this resolution are hereby declared to be severable and if any section phrase or provision shall be declared or held invalid, such invalidity shall not affect the remainder of the section's phrases or provisions. Section seven, that this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval.
Alright. Do I hear a motion to approve? So move. Jason Stewart made a motion.
Second.
Ernie Link, second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question.
Okay.
On section three, is that that a public hearing would be held on April twenty-seventh, two thousand and nine? Does that make sense?
Yeah, that's what it says.
I'm just, I'm just wondering. Uh, that seems like an awful long time ago. I don't think that's. Doesn't seem quite right to me.
I think it was actually, uh, November, the November council meeting.
Yeah.
That's what's on, if I, I don't actually have the.
During November fourteen, twenty forty-five maybe?
Yeah.
Right, that's.
I'm, I'm glad you caught that, cause I didn't catch that. Almost, I'm sorry. Mm-hmm, yep, we, it was, uh, it was condemned, it was torn down, so I'm gonna say that that, let us see.
Well, the exhibit B, it was in here at the bottom, payment due date. If it's not paid within this period of time, hearing to the, that certified or election year, we know gone eleven, fourteen, twenty twenty-five, it's like that big difference basically at the bottom.
That was a council meeting.
Was this matter on the agenda?
No. That's why it's on the agenda today.
They didn't notice it tonight?
Yes.
For hearing?
Yes. And they have, if I'm not mistaken, they have actually declined all.
So tonight's the public hearing?
Yeah. That's why it was moved to tonight because it wasn't on the last meeting. So that day, there should be December ninth, yeah. So the motion was made. If Ernie withdraw, I will rescind and, uh, make a motion to approve as amended.
I will draw my motion.
Uh, will rescind and my motion and I'll make a, uh, motion that we approve, uh, the, uh, ordinance, this is the resolution, resolution, uh, as corrected with the date on section three being changed to today's date.
And I second it.
Okay, motion made and seconded as amended. I'm gonna say that this was probably a, um, resolution that is used as a form. And it just didn't, that wasn't called. So, motion's made and amended, um, and as amended seconded, uh, any discussion?
So what are, what are we amending?
We're amending section three, the date of April twenty-seventh, two thousand and nine to be December ninth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Is this the first time we've done a lien?
No, we did one last month. Or was it month four last? Might've been last month four last, but yeah, we did one. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed with no. And I'll get that filed with the tax collector's office as amended. And finally, uh, we have an on-premises alcohol sales permit request for La Cascada. They have their state beer and wine on-premises only permit, which you have a copy of, or you should have. Uh, they have applied for a city permit, which you should have a copy of that as well. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Second.
Brandon Schrader made a motion, Ernie Link, second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed with no. And with that, I have the mayor's report. This has been a long night, so I will, so I will make this short. Uh, we've been really busy this last month working on grants, getting ready for tonight's meeting, preparing for winter weather and preparing for the holidays. Uh, just so everybody will know, we've already, uh, sprayed the roads once with, um, with a, um, what's it called, brine? Uh, which is provided by our dot.
Is that really potato?
No.
Okay.
Uh, saltwater. But it's a certain amount, certain mixture.
Okay.
So, but anyway, and they've already been sprayed once, uh, uh, I'm, we don't know if it worked or not because the, the precipitation is very minimal. Uh, but just so we know that Jason and his crew and James and them, they are on the ball and they're ready because when I called Jason and said, hey, are we gonna spray? And he said, we're already on it. So that's, I'm glad to hear that. Uh, we have received over four hundred pounds of food for the Thanksgiving food drive. Uh, we've got one place that wouldn't give us their food because they wanna wait till they get it all the way through Christmas and get a picture with it before they turn it in. So I'm gonna say we're probably over five hundred pounds with that. Uh, we've started the Christmas food drive with the same boxes out at, in the twenty-eight businesses around town. Uh, we are grateful for those businesses and for those who have filled the boxes and thanks to the police department and, uh, Chief Thomas for making sure that, uh, these are picked up each Tuesday and taken to the food pantry. And, um, finally, I wanna thank each one of you for your work, uh, that has been put in this past year. Uh, we are making a difference in the city of Truman. And with that, Merry Christmas everyone. We don't have to be four back in every January, do we?
Christmas great. Everybody worked on that. Wonderful job.
Yeah, Christmas parade was great. I, I can't, I can't give Bob Sal enough credit for what he does. And I know a lot of people helped with that and they did, but Bob puts in a lot of hours on everything he does and he works hard at it, so. Uh, with that, do we have any open public comments?
No.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Jay Stewart made a motion.
Second.
Brandon Schrader, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, can stay here.
Opposed, we're going there and slipping the sale on.
I, I, I'll take it, give it back to you.
You don't make the parade long, run beside the parade long.
Oh, okay, thank you.
It was, it was a good round. I have Chief Thomas and Bob will be the ones to ask. I, I.
Hey, you would've had a real good seat.
Well, that was dumb. Yeah, I know. Sit down at daily, no.
He didn't know.
Then I had to back up and it's horrible to begin, but I made it.
I don't remember if I went home. She threw me something in the microwave.
I don't know, I'll have to ask.
We know two different people, it's texting, said, sound, I'm watching this on YouTube and I can't hear you. It's so far, and I was like, well, you're in luck, there's people here working on the sound, so I'll pass it along to the mayor, and I'll pass it along with him if I see him.
Are you, are you broadcasting?
Everywhere, all along we go, they start this one part.
I'll take off the week. I'll take off at noon Wednesday, and I'll be back.
What I'm going to have to have to do anything else, I'll be lowered down. You're going to get some type of contractor, or if you're getting an electrician, or work on stuff, or a master electrician to go through and inspect it all, and then come up with a plan.
Most that we were talked about.
Because I mean, honestly, I mean, in my opinion, that's it, it just needs to be, it needs to be tore down. More than I brought up tonight, in my opinion, it needs to be tore down, I mean, it's just, it is what it is. But if you give it to contractor, or at least a master electrician, and they go through, they will see what it will take, but I mean, I'd say to do anything, because I would say, on the bit, really, just to tear it down, structure something random. But, and the word is said, there's going to cost more than a hundred percent of that. That didn't mean, like we said, you can't, you know, or you can give somebody like that, the contractor, license or residential contractor, see what it would cost, and bring it all up and go.
Appreciate it. Have my Christmas coming too. Beautiful trip. And, I mean, I'm for it, but I'm against it. And, I mean, and it's nothing, because I don't, I'm not, I want to do a rat for the city of Truman. And I've got people that have claimed about Harley Street, having trash all the time, blown out of high tops. Uh, I've had people writing about, uh, uh, behind KFC, they've got to be closed. Uh, what's, what's on, there's nothing that I can spot there, and it's because their company, it goes out. So, I field those calls, and I have to get people to go clean them up, which is okay, I mean, we got to get it done, but it takes away from them being able to be reporting facts, and so on that point of it, I'm for it. Uh, the fact, just like Dr. Uh, Underwood, uh, explained, that the cost and all of that, I understand. But, uh, one of the comments that I've heard, was people just go to Jones' and move their business, Jones', well, I got moved for it. You go to Jones', well, you're going to build it. Ain't going to be no questions asked, you're going to build it. And if you go to most other cities, you're going to build it. So, new construction, just adding it in, the cost, it's not that big a deal, it's not going to cost, say, what, two dollars a month more on the mortgage? Uh, you know, and it's, it's just not that big, that big. I had one come out, and they said, that's one of the, that's one of the hundreds of million dollars. It's just a pricey game. Everybody stirred up, kind of up there. One told me eighteen thousand, I just want to hear. No, I'm saying you, I'm, I'm just saying, there's a lot of people here, she's stirred up, caused it, whereas he is. And, you know, the point is, is, and, and I've told you, I've told a bunch of them. You want to know the fact, call my office, come by my office and talk to them, or call me and ask me to come by your house, I'll come by your house. I'm going to tell you the truth, now, it may not be what you want it to be, but it's going to be the truth. And, and that's, that's what I've, I've talked about, this whole thing, the last three years, with anybody. People get on Facebook, and they start spreading rumors, and they start saying this, and they start saying that, but yet they won't come and talk to me. Is this true, is this written? If they would do that, they would feel a whole lot better, feel a lot better. But there's so many people that have to have.
I didn't know, they told me a hundred some time.
That's our way of living.
There ain't no way.
But I appreciate you coming, and, and I'd invite you to come anytime, any chance you get.
Just hate to split it, and you'll tell me in ninety days, boy, it's not good enough.
My mom used to come all the time, before I, before I came by, she's got, she can't see. So somebody has to bring her, my aunt, she cares nothing about being up there. And, of course, I don't, she, she can't sit up here for five o'clock until we leave.